Well, seeing that it's 7 o'clock, we'll open up the meeting at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room for the Town Hall of Halifax Planning Board for Thursday, February 6, 2025, 7:00 at the Town Hall located at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. The Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. We have the agenda here in front of us. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And one opposed. Okay, anybody have any objections to doing the discussion first for the Alja property at 340 Plymouth Street and then we can move on to the other?
Roger that.
Yes?
Sure, yes.
Yes?
Should we ask the applicants that are here that might expect to be going first since it's listed that way? They could have meetings someplace else. I see a look on their face.
Well, I do know that the Zero Mon Ponset Street asked for an extension, so they will not be here tonight. And I believe, you know, if we look it up, I believe they're good to the 28th and they want to postpone it to the 20th. So I think we're still good as far as they go.
Yep, extension to 2825. Is it all signed?
All right, so we can definitely get them in before the next meeting.
Should we make an issue to continue it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna have a motion to continue PSPR-24-2 and PBSP-24-2 to the February 20th, 2025, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion with a second. All those in favor of continuing the Zero Mon Ponset Street, please say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. All right, well, let's move into the discussion on 340 Plymouth Street then. Mr. Alja.
Okay, so.
Your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Tom Alja, 340 Plymouth Street. So I sent an email to all of yous regarding the Starbucks AutoZone property. And according to a planning board meeting that we had one year and one month ago from today, your town engineer, Pat Brennan, stated that there shouldn't be any construction being built either for the storage facility that was proposed and for Starbucks and AutoZone until the easement on 340 Plymouth Street was installed. And we're just wondering why the construction has taken place at Starbucks and AutoZone and there's no easement at 340 Plymouth Street.
Okay, Mr. Alja, did the building inspector, Ed, respond to your inquiry?
He said that your, the document that he filed with the Registry of Deeds did not include this easement as a requirement. So he's moving forward with his building permit. So I'm requesting that the construction at Starbucks be stopped until the easement at 340 Plymouth Street is installed.
Have you worked out the arrangements? I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead. I was looking for a document.
That has to do with Peck's running their pipe across the property and picking up your water in the ditch at the same time. Have you, has, have those details been worked out, I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
We have, we have a proposed easement, okay? But what we're waiting for is a time commitment from Mr. Peck as to when he's going to do it.
Okay.
So I've had some conversations with Mr. Peck that he doesn't intend to do it. And then most recently, I have had a conversation with Mr. Peck sedating that he intends to do it. And that's where we stand right now. We don't have a firm date as to when he's going to do it and that's where we are.
As I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to do this by memory, it's been a while. There's actually two pipes going across the back of the property. Do I have that straight?
There's gonna be two pipes that go along the back of 340 Plymouth Street. Plus, there's going to be some stone retainer that's gonna be installed along 314 and 340.
Okay, the, i.e. the ditch kind of thing, is that, no, that's different?
No, right at the property line of 314 and 340, there'll be some stone retainer that will be put in place to prevent water from flowing from 314 into 340. And then at the end of that retainer, there'll be the two pipes that will be underground that will flow into the country club.
Into the, yeah, into the pond and whatever. Okay, I'm just trying to remember how it went.
Mr. Brennan stated that that has to be put in place because it will damage our property further by having more water coming from Starbucks.
Okay.
When you say you had a conversation where he had mentioned that he wasn't planning on doing it?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Well, he didn't, he wasn't putting in the, he wasn't putting in the storage. So he didn't plan on doing the easement. And that was prior to any construction going on up at Starbucks. But most recently, there's been construction going on up at Starbucks. So they're moving forward with that. But there is no progress right now on that easement at 340.
Okay, is Starbucks, it's Casco, I'm trying not to identify the buildings there. Is their pipe actually going across your property? I'm trying to put that together.
They do have a pipe that's going into the ditch on 314 that flows right into 340.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
But as Mr. Brennan said, that in order for either one of those projects to happen, Casco, Costco, Casco.
Yeah, yeah, Casco.
And Peck's storage facility, if either one of those go in, this easement has to be put in place.
100%, yeah.
Right.
Because I believe Mr. Bailey sent me copies of your letter and his letter, you know, where he explained that, as you stated, you were under the impression that it had this, he quoted you as, "The system needs to be up and running prior to the system for the property." But getting, but, and before going into service. And he explained in his next letter, "I do not have the grounds to revoke the permit based on Mr. Brennan's commentary. The certificate of action issued and filed with the Registry from the Planning Board that must be used as a guide in these manners. Since the applicant has satisfied the requirements of recording an easement with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, they have satisfied the planning boards and therefore the zoning requirements within their site plan review. The strange easement retention base and the rest of the components required to make a functioning drainage assembly will need to be installed, reviewed, and approved prior to the applicant being able to open and occupy their space as a condition of their occupancy permit." Meaning that if they do not build the site as proposed to the Planning Board, they will not be allowed to open. And he also sent you a copy of what it says in the, that is recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Down there, "We're accessing such a property. This is a common driveway utility area depicted on the plan dated 8/13/2024. And such easements include without limitation the right to enter, exist, maintain, repair, and reconstruct."
I have two comments.
And they use the exact same terminology, you know, not prior to construction, but prior to service. Has he explained that in his letters to you? Those are the words he used?
Those are the words he used, but that's not the words that Pat Brennan used in the video that's on YouTube.
Right.
The other, the other point I want to mention here is, given that your engineer, Pat Brennan, required this.
Correct.
His estimation.
Right.
His opinion, his professional opinion, that's what you guys use. It wasn't, it wasn't in those requirements. And I don't know why it was not in those requirements. It should have been in those requirements because once that building is constructed and once the blacktop is put down, all that water's gonna be running, whether it's in use or it's not in use. It's gonna cause damage to 340 Plymouth Street.
Well, I can show you also that Mr. Brennan is in the same agreement with, with the building inspector, the enforcement officer, that the buildings will not be issued an occupancy permit until everything as specified, you know, with the easement restrictions and the drainage is complete and signed off was the terminology he used.
So, so according to the board here, you will not give Starbucks, Casco, a building occupancy permit until the easement on 340 Plymouth Street is satisfied?
100%.
Can I?
Yes, 100%.
Okay.
They have to satisfy the conditions.
That's right.
And get a sign off from the review engineer before the building inspector, you know, that comes to us and the building inspector. So if that isn't done, he can't let them occupy. I know where you're going. If they get all this stuff done and they still haven't got the easement, where's that water going? I appreciate what you're saying.
Because the easements that are listed on that requirement are only the easements pertaining to.
The access road.
The access road.
And the parking and that stuff there. That's, that was an oversight. I think our attorney ended up drafting that. Am I right with that?
Well, I know it also stated that the recording at the Registry of Deeds would be determined and worded by the Town Council of Halifax. And that is what was submitted and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So it's, it's all in writing that there will be no occupancy of either building until it meets the requirements of the easements.
Can I see those documents, please?
He said he sent them to you. Did you get copies of them?
I got copies of that, of that there, that document. But that doesn't satisfy my needs of 340 Plymouth Street. That document there satisfies the easements that Mr. Peck is granting to Casco.
Not that this answers you directly, but whether it was in the, in the recording documents or not, it's on the plan and that's what the review engineer has to go by. And if that doesn't get accomplished in that way, he's not signing off on it and the building inspector can't give them an occupancy permit. How close are you to getting an easement? Do you have any sense of how that's going?
I mean, we're very close, but I want, I want the easement installed prior to the construction of Casco.
Yeah, I understand. So it looks like they're in process of getting it all done over there. I was having to drive by, I saw the pipe out there. And I think that, are they 18-inch pipes? Is that what's gonna run out there? Because I saw the concrete pipe out there.
The green pipes or the concrete ones?
The concrete ones.
Now, I don't know if that's part of their construction because they have some piping on that, of those plans.
Yeah, but those 18s definitely have to be running from the detention pond, at least in my opinion, have to be running from the detention pond to the ultimate source, to the ultimate repository, which is on the Country Club property. I, I, I don't want to dismiss your concerns. I think maybe we're a little premature. They haven't gotten that far yet. Certainly before they pave, they want to get that in there, to your point earlier, because all that runoff's gotta go someplace. So we want it to be able to collect.
So, okay, everything's good. The only other question I have is this. Let's say that they have everything paved and, but they still haven't done the easement yet. What's the next step for me?
That's the question.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're going with that. If it suddenly impacts your property, then we got bigger issues here. And that's something we'd probably have to bounce off a council because, you know, that would be hard for us to make that determination.
So I have a commitment from the board again that there'll be no occupancy of that property until our easement is satisfied.
That is, I don't want to usurp the chairman's position here. What happens again is that our review engineer, we would have our review engineer go out to see if all the terms of the plan, not necessarily the document, but the plan.
Especially for the drive-through.
Was satisfied.
Is, is 340 Plymouth Street part of the plan?
The ultimate end of the detention area, I haven't got the plan total in front of me. But that has to discharge and I believe that that's the way it was presented and drawn up with the discharge on the Country Club property. Regardless of whether the storage is going there or not, it still has to end up there.
Okay, but 340 Plymouth Street, is it on this plan?
No, I understand. I don't know, do we have, is it on a subsequent page? I can't remember. Do they run the lines down to the rest of the way?
Before the occupancy permit is granted, does the Planning Board have any say on anything? Or is that just?
As far as what?
Well, because we keep saying, we, you know, he's, he's asking for a commitment from us that until this is done, right? And we all go, yep, we got you. And it's date stamped, it's on YouTube, it's in the minutes and all that stuff. And then six months go by and he gets the point.
And the building inspector put it in ready, run it.
No, I get it. I'm just saying, let's talk about a hypothetical worst-case scenario because I think that that's why they're here, because they're trying to prevent worst-case scenario. So then for whatever happens, that doesn't go according to plan. Like what was supposed to go in just happened to be a mishap of not getting in the legal documentation and also why they're here. Mistakes happen. So six months from now, everybody's ready to rock and roll. Those requirements are now satisfied. We committed to that 100% because careful, you just said that, right?
Yep.
Then what happened? Like, is there something where we need to sign off on it? Or is that just the building inspector? And if he decides to sign off on it, then well, sorry that we commit, the board committed to you in February, but it is now August and I don't really give a sh, I don't care.
We can't do anything.
Then we can't do anything. What is the, that's what I'm, I think I would be.
Actually, Tom, you have more experience with that, if you wouldn't mind.
Is that a fair question? That's a fair question.
Yep.
Yeah, what happens is we would commission our review engineer based on their deposit in our review account to go out and confirm to us that the whole project was completed as per presented. We just basically acknowledge that. It's the building inspector's responsibility to issue occupancy or not issue occupancy. We don't actually get to do that particular thing. We get to acknowledge that to the building official that we've been informed that other conditions have been met. And he has to present it to the building official as well.
Okay, and so again, just, and I'm sure everything's gonna go according to the plan, right? I would like, you would like to think in 2025.
Well, I just want to make sure that 340 Plymouth Street's easement is on the plan. So when the building inspector goes out, he's inspecting for 340 Plymouth Street easement.
So now, again, if you don't mind me asking, because I just want to finish this thought. If, let's say, in a rare occasion, that it doesn't go according to plan and somebody signs off on it before they were supposed to or before it was completed, what is the action for these people? Because I'm gonna go ahead and say, I don't care if you're independently wealthy or not, you're not Starbucks wealthy. And so it is, go ahead and sue us, pal, because I'll just wrap you up in small claim, I'll wrap you up in court until you basically, until your grandkids have lawsuits. And so I think that if we are at this stage right now, it is our responsibility to protect them at all costs before it gets to the point of them versus Starbucks, or Casco, right? I don't want to throw any specific data. See, you see what I mean? Like, I know that probably seems a little dramatic, but I think that that's for the residents.
I appreciate exactly where they're coming from. Unfortunately, we're kind of in the middle of all of this. We can certainly direct the building official to be aware and that we have concerns about when an occupancy is going to be delivered and, you know, maybe want to be notified as to the progress, that kind of thing. But ultimately, it's the building official who decides.
If you want them to.
Or haven't accomplished everything.
If you think about it.
We can protest, but.
Without an occupancy permit, which actually, we keep saying the building inspector, but it's also, Pat Brennan said he needs to sign off on it also, the engineer.
Yeah, and he said.
And so there's two people. So bottom line, would it behoove Casco to sit on two gigantic buildings that they can't use and occupy until they meet the requirements of?
No, I couldn't agree with you that. With that, I 100% agree with you. What I'm saying is, what if it gets signed off on before that stuff is done?
Well, it can't because he has to rely on the engineer signing off and us saying that we, the plan's been satisfied via our review engineer. I mean, that's a condition. That has to happen.
It's a condition. It has, and it's at the Registry of Deeds that it has to happen.
Will that be done at a planning board meeting?
We would get the report at a planning board meeting. And the planning board would acknowledge that the plan was constructed, excuse me, the site was constructed as per plan.
So prior to the planning board approving that, I would be able to come here and discuss it?
You can come here at any time.
Look, but before it gets approved by the planning board.
No, 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 approved by the building inspector who would, who would be issuing the occupancy permit or not issuing the.
The review engineer first.
Yes, yes, he has to sign off on it.
And the system only works if it's discharging where it was proposed to discharge. So there's no way Pat's gonna sign off on it if it isn't complete.
Yeah, I would trust that.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do you have a proposed easement or a signed, agreed-upon easement?
A proposed.
Okay, so it's not signed?
It's in paper form. But we're, we're, we're holding on signing it until we get a commitment from Mr. Peck.
Does it state anything about which properties the pipe starts at and things of that nature?
Yes.
Okay, what was the date of the proposed easement?
I don't know.
Was it before or after September 27, 2023?
Oh, after.
Okay, was it after January of 2024?
January 2024, yes.
That was last year. So it was after that?
Yes.
Okay, and it's not recorded and it's not signed?
Right.
Okay. And what does it state? Does it state putting pipes in from 314? And, hold on, I would like to ask what the actual numbers of these said properties are because it's not 314 Plymouth Street anymore since they've been subdivided and it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So what are the actual numbers of the property?
I don't think they've actually done that. The assessors assign the numbers and probably need to contact them to assign the numbers.
I tried to get it through the secretary of the planning board. I have an email that went out asking for what numbers for these lots so that we could properly discuss them because it's confusing with the 314 Plymouth Street.
Yeah, because that encompasses the whole project.
And I would carry that back to the Zero Mon Ponset Street. What's the number of that property? We need to not call it some Zero Mon Ponset Street. What is the number?
Well, someone needs to ask to have a number assigned to it. Typically, they don't do it until there's a permit or something's about to happen. Everything gets assigned zero until there's something else going on with it.
Right.
But they can be asked and they can assign a number temporarily and they, they do it for 911 purposes. So that's really why the numbers get assigned early.
Well, these numbers should be assigned.
Oh, I agree.
Because we have two lots. We have one with a storage facility and we have one with AutoZone. So the drainage easement would have pipes going under the site work that is being done right now at the Casco property, correct?
I don't think they've put any piping yet.
I don't know what they're doing. There was a, you had a diagram up there of the Casco property.
Yeah, the first retention pond is on the Casco property.
So.
Detention.
Retention. What did I say?
Detention.
Detention.
It's, it's this drainage that's going into a ditch on 314. That's the field that's behind.
What would have been the storage facility.
The bank. Or the other auto place. And so there's a ditch there and then that ditch will lead into the easement of the two pipes that go over to the golf course.
Okay.
So this drainage work, this is proposed, it is not signed. So that, but there isn't any pipes that are coming over from the Casco property into the drainage. It would just be.
This, their, their, their drainage from their drainage pond will drain into the ditch on 314 that will flow into 340.
Right.
And that is what's recorded at the Registry of Deeds because they make specific reference to map.
63 lot 6 and 6C. But that's just on the towns' maps. That's the plot.
So the grant of the Common Driveway and Utility Easement, R&amp;J LLC, a Massachusetts limited liability company, for consideration of $1 hereby recognized with an address of 415 Thompson Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, Plymouth County, sorry, Massachusetts, grantor. Owners of the property in Halifax refer to as Assessor's Map 63 lot 6 and 6C. Hereby grants a perpetual easement to leader's company, its successor, a sign or transferee of property. It is acquiring from grantor lot 6, including LRE Halifax LLC, assessing such property to the so common driveway and utility area depicted on the plan, attached hereto and made a part of, I'm sorry, a part here prepared for RJ LLC by Silver Engineering Associates PC dated 8/13/2024. And such easement includes without limitation the right to enter, exist, maintain, repair, and reconstruct if necessary such common driveway and maintain any and all utilities located within the easement. Such easement does not permit grantee to obstruct or construction and obstruction to the easement. For granted source of the title, this is deed referencing, so there's no other. I don't see anything here about a drainage easement. I see here a common driveway utility easement for overhead wires and such of that. I don't see anything. Am I incorrect? Did you hear me mention anything about your drainage easement on this? Is this the proposed easement that you're talking about?
No, I don't believe that, I don't, well, I believe in my layman's opinion, I would think that Casco would need an easement from Mr. Peck to go from their property onto his property. And then Mr. Peck would need this new easement to go from 340 onto the golf course.
The drainage easement. But we haven't talked about a drainage easement being recorded. We just talked about a common driveway being recorded. We didn't talk anything about that. So in this document here, which doesn't include all of the conditions that were spoken of during that meeting, states that no building permit shall be issued until valid easements for the following are recorded. One of them is an easement to allow access, so we have that. The second one is a drainage easement as set forth in the plan submitted by the applicant dated September 27, 2023. Well, that isn't even a current date of a proposed easement, never mind having it recorded. "Easement to allow all parking and roadways to be constructed as set forth in the plan submitted by the applicant dated September 27, 23." I don't see that either. So those three things, we have one out of the three that are actually recorded at the Registry of Deeds. I'm going to go further to state something else. There's only two planning board signatures on this document. And I would state, I would ask a question here. What constitutes a quorum of the planning board, a five-member planning board? What is, what is the actual quorum number? Can I, can I get that answer?
The question is.
No, I asked you a question, Bert. What is the answer to that question?
The question is, when you said there's only two signatures on that, that is not required under our, under our bylaws to have a quorum signature on it. What does require, according to our bylaws, that that is accepted by one person?
What is the quorum?
The chairman, and so the two of us were on there.
So hold on, what is the quorum of this planning board? So hold on, what is the quorum of this planning board? Is it two? Can we have a meeting, a public meeting with two people? Can we? Yes or no? Yes or no?
A quorum exists if there's three out of five members on the board.
Thank you very much, sir. This is not signed by three members and therefore I would consider it.
I just explained that to him.
Not valid. Hold on, what are we doing about a deal away thing right now about a covenant release? How many signatures are going?
Let's not jump all over the place. Let's stay on.
No, it's the same exact thing.
No, it isn't. That's just an acknowledgement of receiving, receiving the record.
Well, let me just give you the other hole.
And as it says.
See, that's true. Why is there a building permit when there is no easement for drainage?
It says it right here. It says, you read it, you read it out loud, Amy. You, it's right here.
I did?
Yes, you did. Assessors map 63 lots B, lot 6, lot 6C and the property hereby grants a perpetual easement in parentheses, the easement.
Common driveway.
Which, you just made that up. It doesn't say common driveway.
Right there on the top.
I'm telling them about what is registered at the registry of deeds. This is what was drawn.
Yeah, this right here, so that the camera can see it, this right here is what it is. Common driveway and utility. It does not state anything about a drainage. Nothing. Period, end of story. Look it up at the registry of deeds. Here it is.
The site plan that was, the site plan that was approved by the board.
Please zoom in on this as well.
Excuse me for talking while you're interrupting. I didn't interrupt you.
There's two things that are not checked off, folks, about the Costco property and the storage property. This is definitely a problem since these people who are sitting here talking to us about the easement will have damage to their property, which is exactly why we're here. I rest my case. And you guys can say whatever you want.
Yes, we just.
And you know you're wrong. And sleep with that.
We have to.
We're here for the drama. That's why we're here.
I'm here to protect the people, are you?
Yep.
Because you're not even, you're making a fudge lie about this.
That's wrong. You can't, that's not fair to say that, Amy.
No, it's true.
Bottom line, there's the site plan. That's the site plan we approved.
And it got the vote.
I'm sorry?
And it was voted.
And it was voted. That site plan includes drainage through the property. It includes it. It's recorded at the registry of deeds. You can try to break it down however you want, but that's what Costco has to comply with. Has to. 100%.
How are they complying with a proposed easement that's not recorded yet? That's one of the, of the check marks to get a building permit.
They can't comply, they can't occupy.
Bingo. Perfect.
And like we just stated, so this is, this right here states that a permit shouldn't be out. Period. There is no drainage easement at the registry of deeds. We've already heard that from the applicant. That is how it is. That's period. So there should be no building permit. So even if the two signatures of, by the way, Mr. Chair last year, Tom Millius, and Vice Chair last year, Robert Gaines, are currently right here. That's the only two signatures on this document and there is an actual problem with it because two of those things are not recorded at the registry of deeds.
And you're positive that the other one isn't recorded?
They're proposed.
You're positive? You went onto the registry site and checked to see if there wasn't.
Our applicant here has stated it, that it's proposed.
No, I understand their opinion. You're suggesting there's two easements that aren't recorded.
Well, we at least know one, don't we?
You know that for a fact.
All right, I have not checked to see if the parking one's there, but even that's something that we need to do and make sure of because they need to access their property through that other property and that common driveway hasn't been constructed yet.
Yeah.
So how are they getting onto the property?
Over their own property.
But that's not on the site plan.
Currently. For construction purposes.
You remember that 16710L that we had to let go of, that they were using a common driveway to enter Starbucks and that common driveway is not constructed? Do you recall that?
I mean, I recall one of the conversations involving that topic, but it'd be tough to recall the exact details, but of course.
But you can see here.
The whole site plan has not been completed.
You can see right here.
The building's on end, the drainage isn't in, the utilities have been moved.
It's not on there long.
The access road hasn't been installed. None of it's been, it's in the process.
Everybody relax.
So to say that it needs to be done.
Listen, the conversation about what you were just asking me was, I remember we were having a conversation about that common driveway and then being able to access this from a shit point because that was part of the thing in our bylaws, right? That you can't access your property through another person's property, right?
Correct.
And that was a conversation that I do remember having. But if we circle all the way back to the easements, what do we need to do to get this done?
We need to have the proposed easement agreed upon by the owner, former owner of the lot and the property owners at 340 Plymouth Street. And this building permit should not be out yet until that's done. It states it straight up, right on the document that I just had that is put away very quickly.
They're not referring to any damn drainage, they're just talking about.
So what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that the building inspector is gonna go out here, look at this plan, 340 Plymouth Street's not on this plan. They've complied with this plan supposedly when it's all said and done and 340 Plymouth Street isn't on here. He signs off on it and the engineer signs off on it. That's what I'm concerned about is Mr. Elliott pointed out. That's, that's the risk because it's not on this plan.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a good point. There's no, there's no way to argue about it, I guess.
If, if that happens, again, a multi-million dollar company is gonna leave two empty buildings there and not comply with the requirements of the site plan.
A multi-billion dollar company.
There you go.
No, 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 no. I don't think you're about to understand what I'm about to say. A multi-billion dollar company did not become a multi-billion dollar by just saying, ah, we'll just do things out of the kindness of our heart. A multi-billion dollar company is gonna look at it and go, oops, they forgot, we can take advantage.
There's nothing forgotten.
So what they put our companies, is, is the thing that bothers me here is what you just said, which was if that happens, that's what we're trying to prevent, is the, well, if that even happens, they are a multi-billion dollar company to make sure that happens if we don't do our job. So I think that that's where we're getting here. So if that is the case where 340 is not on this plan or the site plans are not in writing, I'm sorry, the easements are not in writing to protect the resident, then what do, what do we do? Because I'm having a, I'm feeling like we're the last Alamo here. We're the last line of defense.
Can I offer something?
Certainly.
What we can do is we can ask the building inspector to review his process for issuing the permit. I don't know if 30 days have gone by. I believe 30 days have gone by since the permit was issued. I don't know what the date of the permit is. That's the appeal period.
It's right here.
Mm-hmm.
Where is it?
The building permit.
It's in my, I have it right here.
Stone, Kevin, Dracula.
So if we. If it's within 30 days, this board can in fact appeal to the zoning board of appeals to revoke the permit. In lieu of that, we can in fact communicate with the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer to review the process and say that we don't believe the conditions have been met for the issuance of a permit and are asking him to review it and/or revoke it.
And to his point, how do we get 340 in writing?
Well, he's gonna have to work that out with.
But wasn't that supposed to be done?
Yeah.
In the first place? So if, I'm sorry, if it's me, if I'm him.
No, I, I don't have it in front of me.
And you got, and we, if I'm him and I came to us and we said, yeah, yeah, good, we're gonna include all this and then we don't, whether it's our counsel or not.
Yeah.
Then.
Can we see it?
It's not on him to make sure it gets fixed. It's on us to make sure it gets fixed.
And that's why we have a review engineer, you know, go out and say this was done according to the plan presented to him or it wasn't presented to him.
But I think that the disconnect here is, is that on YouTube and on video, on recorded video, there's one thing. And then in writing, registered with the registry of deeds is another thing and everybody's signing off on stuff based off of the thing that's in writing, not what was agreed upon in video. Am I hearing you correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So we can circle the wagons all we want here.
I understand.
I thought the easement and the overflow drainage, there was a plan on that in, in the big packets of plans.
I remember seeing a plan, I don't see it on this, but.
Because everybody, because to your point, any review engineer or our engineer or the building inspector is not gonna go, before I sign on off on this, let me go back three years to the YouTube video. They're gonna go, where's the piece of paper that we follow? Well, according to this, which is missing information than it should have, but according to this piece of paper, everything's satisfied. Now I can sign off, even if, because even if the planning board reaches out to them and says, please make sure it was done correctly, they're gonna go, per this piece of paper, this was done correctly. Where these people are here proactively to say, but that piece of paper doesn't line up with that freaking camera.
And what did Mr. Peck say to you the other day? You made mention of that. You would, you had conversations with him.
It's, it's all verbal and that's where, that's where it is.
But he can't put anything across your property without you giving him an easement.
Building permits.
Bottom line, I mean.
Right, but he can flip my property.
But no, I understand that part, what I was getting at in terms of signing off on a plan at the end. If it isn't constructed, that drainage isn't going anywhere. So he can't sign off on it. I mean, this, the only thing this, this board in my opinion can do is ask the building inspector to review his process for issuing the permit and were all the conditions that were set out adhered to prior to the issuance of a building permit?
But the conditions that we laid out aren't in that page, piece of paper.
I, I understand.
So that's a problem.
That's a problem.
So how do we fix that piece of paper to line up with the conditions of?
Can I make one point? There is one thing that is not, one of the conditions that is on that paper is not met and that's the easement for the drainage that was supposed to be done before the building permit was given. So already right there, even though all of the checklist isn't on that document, that one is there and that one's not done. And therefore the building permit, in my opinion, should not be out.
And again, we can't revoke a permit, but the building inspector can.
We should be able to put in writing that the easement hasn't, for drainage has not been there and that he needs to revoke it because it's not done correctly.
This is what I was saying earlier. I said, we can send a communication to the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer that we don't believe the conditions have been met based on blah, blah, blah. And we think that this needs to be reviewed and/or revoked.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we can do.
I think that's what we have to do.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Now, does that solve? So if we do that.
Then they're gonna have to do something to get all the things in place to get.
And would that satisfy?
As long as 340 Plymouth Streets gets added to those requirements.
And by the way, so this now circles back to what we have on record and in the minutes, I would hope, that after this was revoked and it's not, it's not being added afterwards because we feel like adding it afterwards, it would be in addition or an amendment because it wasn't originally added.
We would have to ask them to come back for an amendment to the site plan.
No, it's already on the document. It's on the document. It states that.
The drainage easement, but you were talking about the easement.
No, adding 340, Amy.
At 340.
Because 340's not on.
But if the drainage easement is referring to 340, it wasn't just fully written, but it is, that is what it's about.
I thought it was in the.
I want to specifically block 340 Plymouth Street.
That's what I'm getting at. If we're gonna amend it, we need to have them come back and do a modification.
According to this.
And they're gonna have to do it anywhere. They're not gonna get.
The building permit for 314 Plymouth Street Lot 636-0 was, issue date was December 9th, 2024.
Why is it still 314 Plymouth Street? Is that the new assessors' number for that lot when it was 314 prior? Because I thought we had to assign a number.
Hold on, hold on. The sound test, we're starting to get to a, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I mean, I interrupted. It was rude. We're almost there, though.
But it's just true. The building permit is supposed to have the correct number on it. We just discussed that earlier.
Does it have a lot and plot number?
Permit number NC 24-2, says right here, lot 63-6-0, applicant Steven Doms.
Yeah, so, so as long as, so we have to send a letter and a communication saying, these weren't done right and the way that this is filed now is not correct because it's missing a bullet point specifically referring to 340. But then also to your point, I mean, they gotta do that anyways. So why wouldn't we do that? Why would we skip this part? Like why?
Right.
Just to say, well, we'll let them construct it and then they can't get in. I get that and that's, that's a great extra layer of defense. That's that extra safety net.
But let's get it right now.
Let's get it right, right now. And it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal. I mean, if they have to do it anyways, let's at least get it in writing so everybody can go to bed at night sleeping and not worrying about that.
We should, we should get in touch with them and tell them to ask to get on the agenda.
Yeah.
And for a site plan modification.
Perfect.
Because they're gonna have to do it to do, to get what they want anyway, so what, I can't see you resisting.
Why not put it in writing?
A stop work permit needs to be put out because of the fact that the current document doesn't have one thing at least on there that's done. And they don't have the common driveway constructed, so I don't know how they're getting in and out of there. So I don't know why they would be wanting to build the site plan. Do we even know that the storage facility is gonna be built because?
Well, this is another reason we have them come in for a site plan modification.
All right, so, so an action plan so that we can wrap this all up. Because there's a lot of things that I'm sure a lot of people are, could continue, but this has to be transcribed to somebody to write a letter appropriately for the right person. So what would the action plan be if you were to do like a, this is what has to, like, for the minutes, for whether it's the secretary, whoever else, or the chairman, whoever else has to write the letter? What is it? A letter needs to be written for a site plan modification to address the missing drainage easement?
No, just missing, yeah, missing easements.
In reference to 340.
In reference to 340. And my understanding is they're not gonna go forward with the storage facility. So we want some clarification about the access road.
That was, the address 340 Plymouth Street, that was the whole, I thought, the whole thing was revolved around the roadway going in.
Yeah.
For safety coming out because of the lights, they couldn't take a left coming out.
Right. I, my understanding is, and this is just third hand, was that they've come to some kind of an agreement with the PECs that they're gonna build the road. But we need to get that finalized. We need to get that squared away at the same time. And, and that's why I'm suggesting getting in touch with them for a modification.
So who's writing the letter and who's it going to?
It's gonna go to Costco.
Okay.
I mean. I mean...
No, we need to second...
No, no, to get the site plan modification.
Hold on. We need to do a stop work permit on this right now and clarify what's happening with their entrance because that's gonna affect the entire town, not just the next door neighbor. This needs a stop work permit now.
We can't do that.
We need to tell them that it's not following the site plan. There's an easement that is not agreed upon yet and that and that we need it to be a stop work permit and then that they need to modify due to the fact that they're not following the site plan.
Who has that conversation, is my question. I'm still...
We sent them that.
Because I would walk out of here going, "Somebody else is gonna do that."
I mean, I'll volunteer...
And then we're all gonna do this.
I'll volunteer to do it if nobody else wants to do it.
All right.
But the...
But it needs to be approved.
This is a two-step process here.
Yeah.
We need to notify the building inspector of what we just discussed just a few minutes ago. And ask him to take the appropriate action.
In writing.
In writing.
Yeah.
And/or then contact Casco.
Okay.
And tell them we believe that they need to come in and have a site plan modification based on conditions that have changed on the lot. Including drainage easements that are not in place. And/or what is the status of the construction of the access road?
Sounds like a pretty good action plan, right? So if we can get all of that in writing and on Town Server...
Yep.
Boy, that feels good to me, at least for a place to start. Right? Would that satisfy...
Satisfy us.
I like that. Thank you for walking me through that.
That was great.
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, whatever I just said.
Yeah, a second. A motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second on a letter to be sent to the...
Building inspector.
Building inspector with the board's concerns regarding requirements? Do I have a second?
Second.
Should we make it a little bit more certain and make sure that every item is put in there? Because this isn't okay for the town of Halifax or anybody surrounding it.
I think if you were to say that your motion was in regards to the bullet points that you just addressed that can be found in the minutes, that that's the...
So the building of the common driveway. The easement for 340 Plymouth Street. And also make note that in the current document that's recorded at the registry, indeed, that easement is there so that he is for sure knows that that is not completed and the building permit shouldn't be given. What date is on that building permit, Bart?
December 9th, you just said.
I just said that, December 9th, 2024.
If it was within 30 days, this board could have the authority to appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
Right, the zoning board of appeals is...
But once 30 days is left.
Okay. So we send that letter, which we seconded.
Yep.
So we gotta say...
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to send the... Submit the letter with corrections.
Yeah.
All those in favor say, "I'm gonna ask for a voice vote."
Brendan Elliott, yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
It passes.
Now, question. Once that letter goes out, what's the next action step from there?
Well, we're gonna have to wait and see.
Okay.
What the building inspector does.
Okay. And then just keep up written communication with the building inspector after that goes out and...
And the board would also appreciate if you do hear any more information from Mr. Peck as regard to timeframe, writing, or endorsements, or anything you could add. Please call and let the board know.
Definitely. We'll include you on the easement and anything else.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks for cleaning that up for us.
I also would make a note that I think one of our procedures should be that all approval letters need to be approved by the board before they're signed.
And, well, I don't have anything to say on that. I didn't mean to jump on that. Does that need like a second or a thing, or is that just a statement? Because I don't wanna move on from there.
I would like it to be part of our process.
Thank you.
I don't think that anything was left out of that letter intentionally. I do think it was perhaps a mistake. Right? So I just wanna be careful. I'm not... And I want it on record that I'm not implying, right, or insinuating. But there also, if something was missing, I do think it's our responsibility to catch it.
This is page nine on the plan that's right up in front of you. I really thought I saw or recall seeing the pipe going behind the algis and connecting.
Yeah.
And Mr. Peck was sitting here saying how we can always use the water at the...
At the course.
At the course. And I almost recall there being one. But again, there's nine pages and you see on each one.
Was that on the site plan of the storage warehouse?
Oh, see, that could be too. It could be on, yes.
Which isn't being built and therefore...
Yeah, so that qualifies for an amendment to the site plan.
For sure, I saw one.
So again, it's not... I don't think there was anything nefarious.
No, no, no.
But it is our responsibility to address it and handle it.
Yeah, now that we're aware of all these new factors and whatnot.
Right, because it could be something as simple, like you said, as an oversight, where there were both the storage warehouse and Casco worked together in putting together the drainage thing. And then who knew that the storage facility was going to be...
My point earlier was is that major corporations make hundreds of millions of dollars on simple oversights.
Yep.
And it's the people like that that pay the price for it.
All right. Good. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Let's go sour to keep you guys waiting.
Now you know what you're up against. Spring. Oh, boy.
Okay, we're gonna open up the hearing here on PSPR 25-1 for 300 Plymouth Street, the urgent care site plan review application. Somebody like to speak to this?
Yeah, sure.
Your name and address, sir?
Vinnie Iacozia with JAST Construction. We've been, we're gonna be the general contractor for the build-out for the KIA Central Urgent Care. We've applied for permit and we just, we need to present it in front of you guys before it moves on to Ed Bailey for approval.
Do you have, have you reviewed parking? That's gonna be the big thing.
I'm not sure if parking was, with no site plan. Oh, we're doing an interior build-out. It went from being a restaurant at one point.
Yeah, it's change of views. And that's really up to the building official to throw to us whether it's in parking considerations or not. I don't see where it would be any more congested than the Chinese restaurant was.
Yeah. So they're currently splitting that space. The landlord's general contractor split the space and given the KIA Central 3,600 square feet of it. And they're actually doing the landlord work, doing the demise thing, bringing the power, did all the underground plumbing, and we're just going in there to do the rest of the build-out.
I was driving by one day and I said, "If they're putting any kind of a medical facility in there, they better put some glass on the front of that building or no one's gonna walk in."
And the landlord is doing that right now.
And then I drove by the next day and the plywood was up. So I was thinking along the correct...
The only thing with the parking, as long as it was brought up, is, you know, the employee parking... Would there be an ambulance service attached to the urgent care?
Only on an as-needed basis.
I'm sorry?
Only on an as-needed basis. So in the event somebody walks in and it turns into a more significant issue than we're prepared to deal with, we would call the fire department.
Oh, so you don't have your...
No.
Yes, we have that other urgent care businesses that like share an ambulance between three or four different urgent cares and it would...
Be parked there at some time.
Right, and it was passed on. They had a problem in Pembroke specifically where they were sharing the ambulance, if I understand this correctly. They were like sharing the ambulance service between three different places. And if the ambulance wasn't necessary, they were calling Pembroke Fire Department. And Pembroke Fire Department increased their number of calls astronomically. So, you know, that was my question too. Is this gonna be an extra burden on the fire department as far as the number of calls?
No, we don't anticipate that. We have three existing locations. And, you know, the need to call the fire department is atypical. So most cases, for that sort of event, you would expect the patient to go to the emergency room. So these are just episodic, you know?
Which people should have called 911 to begin with before coming walking in.
Right. Didn't we go through that when they were proposing it for Starbuck's? They're gonna do urgent care there, right?
Right.
And that was the issue with the ambulance.
Right, I know the fire chief was concerned with that, you know? Especially, he was from Pembroke and was aware of how it was working in Pembroke. And it was, "We don't have an ambulance available. You handle it, you handle it." And they were, increased their number of responses, which would certainly put a drainage on a small town like Halifax, I'm sure you can well imagine.
You mentioned 3,600 square feet. Is that what I heard?
Approximately.
Approximately. How does that relate to other facilities? Is that in the middle, is it large, small?
So typically, we're consuming anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 square feet. And it's typically five exam rooms, an exit room, break room, and stores. So we'll have extra space, but the profile is basically consistent with what we have.
You mentioned that, hi. You mentioned that they were subdividing one of the units to 3,600. Do you know how much the original space was? How large it was?
No, I'm not sure. I think it's closer to 5,000.
It's approximately 5, because based on what's left over, it looks to be about 1,500 square feet or so.
Yeah, that's facing the building on the left.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I'm Everton Weeks. My wife and I run the business.
Nice to meet you. Do you have any... How many employees do you have on per shift?
So typically, a provider, a rat tech, and a medical assistant. Depending on the volume, maybe a receptionist. Typically, the rat tech wears two hats. When they're not shooting x-rays, they're taking, providing the intake for registration. But typically around four.
And how many patients do you usually see per...
So it varies by location. We anticipate on the high side for Halifax, the twenties per day. And we run a shift eight in the morning to eight in the evening.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Monday to Friday and Saturday and Sundays, it's nine to four.
Are your other locations local? I'm just curious.
Easton, Bridgewater, Stoughton. Stoughton was the first, 2011. Easton was 2015. Bridgewater was 2017.
And what name did they go by or they all do?
KIA Central.
KIA Central?
Urgent Care.
I think there's a need. We haven't had any kind of medical facility since Compass was open in the other plaza there. That was a while ago.
I think we're actually, when we look at our patient roster, we're actually floating into Bridgewater, folks from Halifax now. So that just kind of deals with us for us sort of looking at the area because it is underserved.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have the mobile home park where there's a lot of older people.
Any special permits, variances, or anything else that's gonna be required? No? Like no special equipment or anything like that?
They have, yeah.
Yeah.
There is an x-ray room that's been approved by the state.
Yeah, the state does all that.
Yeah.
You don't have to lead line the walls anymore or anything.
Oh, well, I actually be doing this.
Oh, do you? I can remember lugging in four or eight sheets of lead line.
Oh, it's in the drywall now. They put it right near the lead line.
Yeah, it's in there, yeah. Back in the drainage to glow it on. Slap it on with the asbestos paint. I remember installing a lid line. Door that must have weighed 600 pounds with the lead line glass and everything. I'm sorry, wall stories.
He's old.
Do we know how many parking spots are at 300 Plymouth Street?
How many are on your plan?
Well, this is only an interior build-out, so there's really no...
On our plan, yeah. On our site plan.
This would have significantly less employees than a Chinese restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
So if what they're doing is taking over... I know change of views, obviously, we have to do our diligence, but...
Have the space.
But the existing building, existing square footage, it should be all separate. You should have done it.
Office by square footage.
We have four people just in the kitchen, let alone behind the bar on the floor.
Yeah, we just go by square.
Are you opening? Do you really?
But it's not retail. Retail is Halifax, actually. Because that's one per hundred, which is absurd.
Maybe was there any outside lighting or anything out there on the parking lot that you could see? I thought you had it up there.
There's something lighting on the building.
I didn't see any of it.
No, it's gonna be very important that you understand that there will be residents that will complain if your signage takes up more than 30% of your window.
So we're using the existing real estate?
Beautiful.
Whatever signage is there.
If you decide to put anything on the window...
Yeah, you can use...
For the love of God, just let it stay. Look at Cape Cod Cafe Pizza and go...
Don't do that.
And I love the sign for Cape Cod Pizza, and I love Cape Cod Pizza. But unless you wanna come back here, it's in through this circus.
There's a special permitting process if you wanna do something on the glass, other than frosting.
Welcome to Halifax.
You have to get a permit anyway, but you're only allowed 30% covered by glass.
Yeah.
I don't see any...
No indication.
Sixty percent of the length of the building. But that's the building inspector.
This was literally two meetings worth of conversation. So just trying to get your back. Remember, I have two small boys, so I'll probably be in their office. Remember who had your back? Especially if you have an x-ray machine.
On the face of this, this is probably the easiest thing I'll ever get to look at. But those are the ones you always have to watch out for because there's always something lurking that you forgot to mention. Parking was the only thing that came to my mind. Everything else is internal.
Yeah, and Rick had a good point. The building dimensions are not changing, you know, any width or length or anything. So square footage-wise, you...
Yeah, sometimes change of views can have some impact, but I don't see it applying to this.
Any kind of deliveries or anything being made there?
No, just normal supplies.
Yeah.
Nothing that would need an 18-wheeler, though. That'd be coming right off a FedEx truck.
Yeah, not a 53-foot tractor trailer.
And it has a rear entrance, ain't it?
It does. It has a rear entrance.
And you'd be taking any ambulance rides from the front, I would imagine?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a handicap spot?
There is in the front.
Right out front of you?
Right.
Okay. Is there any need, do you think, for any special parking for an ambulance or anything like that? Just crossing boxes, I mean checking boxes, yeah. Thinking out loud.
Does an ambulance have a right to park, basically park wherever they want, though, right? Like if there was a handicap spot? Or are you saying segmenting space specifically so nobody...
Oh, no, no, I was just like thinking like...
Not even a handicap.
So if there's a bunch of cars packed out front and the ambulance pulls in, they're gonna be unloading from the closest they can, I'm just thinking.
Can we say unloading?
Oh, loading, sorry. I did remember that, but I just misspoke.
Yeah, they would just pull right up out front. And how long are they gonna be there for, really?
Yeah. Never heard of that.
Never heard of designated ambulance parking.
No, no.
No. Any other questions or comments from the board members?
Is there a motion to approve the plan on the inside? Is that what this is?
Well, it's not about the inside. It's about...
Just citing the business.
I mean, the inside, we have nothing to say, really.
As far as signed permits and all that, like I said, you just work with the building inspector.
Turn it, can you see that needs attention? Because I don't see anything. I mean...
Pretty straightforward.
So would it be appropriate to say we make a motion to approve the SPR 251-300 Plymouth Street Urgent Care Site Plan Review Application?
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with it.
With the condition that the site plan shows that or the property has a handicap spot out there for it. How many handicap spots are in the parking lot? Do we... Because we don't have the site plan here for 300 Plymouth Street. And I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm just making sure that we're checking all the boxes because we don't really even see, like, they're not really marked that well.
Shouldn't there be one in front of the phone, please? One in front of here, one in front of Cape Cod, right down the line?
Yeah, there's at least one in front of the urgent care facility, but I can't speak for...
They put some ballards in front, right?
Yeah.
For the spots. Yeah, that's because somebody actually drove into one of those buildings.
When I asked if it was gonna be appropriate, I was actually making the motion. No, that was missed. That was lost in translation.
And then Amy did have a question already. And then Amy did have a question already.
Yeah, I questioned it, just not, not your motion, I questioned about that, I'm just thinking because.
On the basis that it conforms with the proper number of handicap spaces, how's that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the site plan for three hundred Plymouth Street, the urgent care. Application PS PR twenty-five dash one. I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. Brendan?
Uh, yes.
One question, did we include that? I, I just want to be clear, we included the handicap spot, just the, okay.
Yes.
All right, Amy, yes.
Uh, myself, yes, Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Unanimous, unanimously approved.
Welcome to town.
We should have taken you first.
I know, I thought I was talking the whole time. Why do you make these people wait?
Yeah, that was a lot of fun, yeah. Okay, thank you. Should they say? I'm not taking one with the handicap one on it.
Oh, great, yeah.
The motion includes.
Well, we don't have any of the exterior stuff on that plan. I'd kind of like to have like the actual documents for the properties here so that we can have.
Yeah, that really kind of makes sense.
Bills?
All right, where are we?
Bills?
What vote?
Uh, we have this gentleman right here.
Oh, wait a minute.
And adjourned, sorry.
Yesterday, so I may not be on the agenda.
Oh, you're not, that's why.
Any other unscheduled business following this post?
I would have included you in a agenda, I, I thought you were here maybe for something.
Seven Autumn Lane, right?
No, no, I knew I was gonna wait, so I appreciate you.
I did read the email, I'm sorry, your name and address, sir?
Bruce Grindell, one Landpost Drive. I'm here about seven Autumn Lane.
And your question, sir?
I had the engineer create a current condition plan. And I met with him to figure out how we could put a house on that plan. He sketched it in and we talked and a couple of items came up and I'd just like.
Right, had some questions. And then you, you got the response that you needed to discuss with the building inspector as far as zoning goes. He came back with an email to you.
Yeah, some of the abbreviations, I don't know what.
Yeah, but he said it was a buildable lot.
He said, and it's a buildable lot.
However.
For purposes.
However, yeah.
Realistically, it's, I have the plan that he sketched out.
Top of foundation comes to mind immediately.
Yes.
Foundation is the problem. It's one of the problems. Conservancy, he was unfamiliar with what the requirements were.
It was, you could build a house by special permit.
In zoning board.
In conservancy.
So on, the contingency on my purchase and sale agreement is that I can build a twenty-four hundred square foot ranch house with a pool. And I think we've kind of known that this is gonna be a challenge all along, so. I was happy the way it kind of came out. You can see here, the, this is, this is the setback, the fifty-foot setback. So we're coming right up to the fifty-foot setback. There is a, there is a slope, but it kind of fits in nicely. I thought it would, I assumed we would have this. It's a walkout basement.
Yep.
So when we did all of this and he, we just figured out where we would bring the driveway into a garage that's attached here. And then he has walls to support and to level out and so forth. So we got through all of this. There are some pieces of this that I was concerned about. But when he got to this point, he said, the foundation we had going in was nine feet. And then he said, hold on, I'm pretty sure there's a requirement for the, the foundation to the road.
Yeah.
And he came back.
I'm sorry, two feet above the crown of the road.
Two feet above the crown of the road.
Was it within a hundred feet of the road or was it?
Within a hundred feet.
Yeah, okay.
You know, so we are within a hundred feet, being the fifty back. So he said, you could build an eighteen-foot basement. I don't think, I'm not sure if you could do that, but I might have a bunker underneath my house.
That's a lot of cement.
I gotta tell you, my front wall's eleven feet tall, I had to get up, so.
So, so we're, we wind up being nine feet below that requirement.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so.
Can you vary that?
Yes, and specifically in this because.
I'll get a variance for it.
Has to be presented by the land. And if you have a lot that's this tough, you can ask for a variance.
Due to the topography of the land.
Topography of the land. Because that's the only thing you can get a variance theoretically.
Yeah, and we don't do that, the zoning.
I appreciate, you guys have helped me out a lot, I really do appreciate everything you've been doing for me.
Have you run this by conservation? Because that's gonna be my thought process on this one.
This, I wanted to get things moving. I told them that I wasn't even, until the lot was released, I wasn't gonna do anything.
Yeah, yeah.
But now I'm figuring, I might as well just get some things started. But I want to spend a lot of money before I know I'm gonna be able to do something.
I don't, I don't think you'd get conservation on that. What's that? I don't think the conservation's gonna be a big issue on that.
Yeah, I mean, the.
They don't usually allow.
The engineer said, we're within the first fifty here. We won't be able to do any, it's a small backyard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a tiny backyard.
So you're within the one, oh, so you're.
You have to stay within this fifty feet.
Okay, so you're within the hundred. So you don't need to say that you're within the fifty, you're within the one hundred.
No, I'm, no, no, I'm building in the fifty. And this is the, this is the fifty I cannot touch. I have to go through conservation.
Behind the fifty-foot setback, that's, that.
Yeah.
The first fifty feet you can do things with approval.
Correct.
Right, I thought it was.
This I can't touch at all.
Right, because that's the.
I did ask about taking trees down and he thought that I'd be able to, you know, take down big trees that may threaten the house.
Some vista pruning, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with the pine trees that are there.
They're pretty big.
They're, they're really big. Destroy the house.
Pine trees snap, so you.
I had one hit my house with forty thousand dollars worth of damage.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the thing just came down, put two holes in the walls and, so I had my two bathrooms and my deck was destroyed. The bulkhead came down.
Oh, that's a sad.
Boom, the door, the basement opened.
What is a building envelope?
Where you can.
This is the building. That's where I could build a house, but.
Where would you put the pool?
Where would I put the pool? That's the, I put the pool in the, I put the pool.
In the bunker.
Yeah. It's an indoor pool.
It's an indoor.
I put the, I put the pool in the PNS. We're not really sold on it, but it was just a way to back out of.
If you.
Yeah, if you say, well, you got a, you know, ten-foot backyard there, so, you know, you're all set. So I wanted to, so the pool, I could get out of this, I think, just based on how this all lays out. But, so my concern, I just wanted to, and the engineer recommended, could you just, you know, maybe get a sense of, do you think the variance will, will happen?
Because. And again, we don't do that, you'd have to speak with the. Well, that's why I said the first, in my email said, the first thing I was to check with the building inspector. And he would say, okay, you have to go here, have to go there or whatever. But the variance itself would have to come from the zoning board of appeals.
But if ever you had a reason to ask for a variance.
The topography's a good hardship.
The topography is the hardship.
Can I, can I ask for a variance without a final, at a stage like this? Could I have this drawn up? Or do I have to have the final plan? The architect's gotta put the house together? That's the.
I don't think so, because all you're really looking for a variance of is top of foundation.
Yeah, so any foundation I put in there, it's regardless of what.
Any house you put on top of the foundation.
Yeah.
I would run this by conservation too, because you're within the one hundred and they will have different order of conditions and such.
Especially where it's conservancy too, huh?
Yeah, the conservancy is the other thing, even the engineer wasn't familiar with.
Yeah, but conservancy really has nothing to do with conservation, just to clear that up.
But he's within the one hundred, no, he's within the one hundred.
You're right, I just didn't want anybody to confuse conservancy with conservation, because they're really two different things.
Yeah.
So you probably want to know where your septic system was gonna go and everything so that you could actually show.
The septic system is drawn in here, the septic system is on the front.
I see it now, I saw it before, sorry.
So, yeah, he did, he put all of this, and we're not, we may change this out, we may not go with the. He, he put in the worst case with the sixty, the eighty-foot ranch. We may go with like fifty, forty, sixty or something like that.
Yeah, go for the biggest.
Yeah, naturally, this is the worst case, is what.
Can anything be filled in?
Well, I would just go and present it.
Concrete foundation?
If I were you, I would present it as this without stating that you're willing to go back or if they're already gonna be like, oh, go back. You know, but I would get, I, do you have in the purchase and sale that you're subject to receiving the permit?
Yes, yeah. And actually, we, we're not even going out the permits till you release the property.
Right, which is the covenant.
This is just something going.
Trying to get a feel for what you have to go through.
Right.
It's just.
Did you get the other letter about him paying, offering to pay a cash bond to release the property?
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
Oh, wow, cool.
You may want to do that before I back down.
Yes.
And the camera's right there.
I'm not very good at that.
Do this.
No, but I, I just don't.
We had something similar come up recently and kind of worked something out. But he, and don't let me speak for the board here, I'm speaking for myself. You'd have to come up with a bona fide quote.
Yeah, of what?
To do the work and a time period on that 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 quote is good for.
Yeah.
And how long would it take to put that quote together? Because his, his feeling was, the reasoning was going to do that was he wouldn't be able to complete the, the stuff until probably April.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
So that was to hurry me along to get, get going on the approvals.
Right, April, May. But, yeah, and he's gonna have to come up with a proposal of what he's gonna do and we're gonna have to bounce it off our review guy to make sure it's okay.
Yeah, so a quote on what is needed to finish the road and then we'll have to have a peer review on it. And then it would go to a bond.
I mean, so all that, over the next two months, he could probably just finish the work, get it approved and have it signed on.
Yeah, if he wanted to go that route, I mean, that would be the best thing to.
There's not a lot left, I mean, and it was just that winter came and he wasn't gonna be able to put the, the new top down, top coat down. And so there's a couple of other items he had to do construction on.
It's not that long a street either, so.
No, it's not a, not a big street. He's, he's all for it, so he's ready to go, so.
Have him start getting that quote together and then coming in and we'll send it to peer review.
Or if he just wants to go ahead and do the work.
That's the thing, I'm just wondering, he may just decide, well, we're getting, you know, time is passing. It's, it'll be the end of February before things get started and two months later he could have the whole thing done, so.
Well, don't we have to decide what needs to be done in order to review?
No, no, it's already. The inspection, we had an inspection done, another inspection. He's gotten that, he's now gonna do all that work. And I came back with it needing a new top coat and some other things. He's gonna do that work.
Who did the inspection?
Um, that was Grady.
Oh, okay, so I mean, it still has to be bounced off our review engineer.
So send the work, so send that work into us.
Did that get passed, I mean, he said, that happened last December.
Oh.
So it's time's passed.
Where, where, I, so.
Make sure that the work is updated.
This is not me, this is between you guys.
He can come in and talk to us.
Yeah, but, but then I just meant to like quicken it. If he said to the builder, the, like, get your, make sure that Grady's has the same plan on finishing the road.
Grady didn't do a plan. Grady redid the inspection.
And just made a list of.
And made, and confirmed the list and added to the list some additional things. And he said he will take care of those. And then I'm, my assumption is Grady goes back out and inspects and says it's all done.
Yeah, except that our guy has to do the same thing.
So the work list, make sure it's up to date?
The work list, you have the work, you have it.
I know, but it's from December of twenty twenty-three, correct?
Twenty, it was December of twenty twenty-four. It just completed that.
Oh, I got it.
You guys, you guys were the ones who said we had to do it.
Yeah, right, right.
So we, we got him to do it and.
Yeah, so now we can have it peer engineered.
We need to send it to, to our engineer.
So, yeah, so we have to send it to the town's engineer to make sure that that.
You've had this since December.
Well, we need a revolving account from the owner of the street.
I sent a note about that, who gets the money and how is that paid? And that's, that's you got.
Well, we didn't know.
What we need to do is get that review.
Yeah.
Send it to Pat and ask him how much to review it.
Yes.
So that we know what we're dealing with for dollars.
We just need an.
So we can do this.
The admin's name, check with her, because all of this has gone, I've, I've had emails back and forth with her and Grady. And all of this has been going on for a month.
Yeah, 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 no, no, no. We're just trying to, we're just trying to blindly know what, what we have, so we're giving you a guideline, we're trying to help. So then we can get a review price and then there'll need to be a revolving account from.
Deposit that money.
From the owner of this.
With the town.
Yeah, tri-ami.
And then that'll be done probably before the next meeting if we get on it right away, because the next meeting's the twentieth. And then we can know what the bond's gonna be and do the covenant release again. And we should just make it that we have an industrial, let's finish the rest of the lots with this process, right?
And then I guess when, when you come back with, with that amount of money, he gets to decide whether or not he wants to do that.
Yes. I can't see it being much. I mean, it's just a, a review of the work that's going to be done.
Well, no, 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 the bond is gonna be to cover all the work that hasn't been done.
Yes, correct, I'm sorry.
So that's what you're, that's a fair amount of money.
Yeah, it, it gets a little tricky because what he can do it for and what we can do it for are two vastly different things.
But a bond though of two hundred and twenty, what was it, twenty-five? Remember that, around there, it was like, what, five thousand?
So.
He actually made a little higher.
He's gonna look at it and say, if it's too much, I'm just gonna wait the two months and finish it myself and.
You know, that's, that's way, that's the way the other.
It may not be worth you guys going through all of this effort just to have him come back and say, well, you know what, I really am.
Yeah, if you're that close, you can, this time, why throw five grand away?
Yeah, and that's the kind of work they do, so they can.
Yeah, he's in Foxborough though, which is.
Yeah, I know.
And that's why he hasn't done anything with it, he wants nothing.
Okay.
You know, when he had fifteen houses to build, it was one thing, but now he's got one lot, it's like.
Just a suggestion.
With an underground swimming pool bunker.
With an underground swimming pool and a bunker, within a bunker.
That's worth coming down from Foxborough.
Maybe a wave maker?
This has nothing to do with the planning board, but just as an aside, when you're going to the zoning board of appeals, you're gonna ask, I would think, two variances. I'd also change the language and make it say and/or special permit.
And.
When you apply, in the application?
Yeah, in case they decide to go special permit route. And if they decide that, then you'd have to refile, re-advertise and do all this stuff. But if you put the language in all at once, no matter what they want to do, you've got it covered.
You can amend it as you go if you had to.
Okay, and this is what I.
Special permits and/or, excuse me, variances and/or special permits.
Okay, and this would get presented to the zoning board?
Appeals.
Okay, does, do they, would they need him to, would, would this be good enough or would we need him?
I think so, you'd present it to the secretary and have her, or the admin, and have her pass it by the chairman.
So can I come into the town hall and, and provide this and?
Yeah, that's my take on it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't mind coming in and having to say, no, you're gonna have to do something else if you think that, if that's a way to go.
I just don't see why they would need house plans. I mean, because you're really just looking at.
The interior, probably not.
No, you're just looking at topability.
Single family home.
Yeah, I mean, I could come in and drop this off and have them look at it and have them tell me yes or no.
Yeah, if it's suffice.
I would, I would send it by conservation too, I really would, because you're building within the one hundred.
Yeah, you're gonna have to file with them in any event, but.
Grady, Grady didn't think there'd be any real problem with it, he says this.
You're outside.
Working within theirs.
I just mean.
He was not concerned about this. The conservancy, he has said he never dealt with one in Halifax, so he wasn't certain with that what's gonna. But it was the.
Top of foundation.
Top of foundation.
Yeah, and again, conservancy and conservation are two different things.
Because I saw conservancy a year and a half ago when I came in here and that's what I was asking about and really I couldn't find out anything. You know, all I heard was it's a buildable lot, so. I appreciate you guys, thank you very much. You guys have been very patient, very helpful, I really appreciate it.
You're, you're helping us get this drawn out of our side.
I hope so, even with the quirkiness of it all, we still, it's.
Probably see some beautiful wildlife from your windows.
Nothing's gonna go behind us.
I would put some beautiful windows out for that so that you can see it all, it would be so beautiful.
That's our, and that's having the walkout basement and everything, that's gonna give us plenty of access.
Very cool. Very cool.
Good.
You might want to consider the property out back, you were saying, I'll, I may, I may give you an easement to the.
Yeah, it's funny, you had to say the E-word.
Yeah, do that after.
You guys, that was, that was great.
Okay.
That was good to see. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do our bills here.
Go to your jacket, I think that's.
You want to do this?
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to pay PGV Engineering for professional services between January 21st, 2025 and the end of January 2025 for Hilldale Lane Plan Review Services in the amount of $618.75.
All right, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the bill from PGV Engineering in voice 433. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We don't need an extension for.
No, two to three.
Because they're good. All right, what else do we have? Planning board, approval denial forms, we don't need that, anything?
I'll make a motion.
Anything in the black one?
No, it's Bill's. Nothing.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
How did I, is this your, how did I end up with this?